I'm sure to appreciate my friends bringing me here.
I'm the good old priest.
She works in justice.
I'm standing there.
So she's like, support for America.
I saw the priest.
Test.
Long, maybe too long for the mouth.
Call this meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals to order. And if you would, let us pray. Dear heaven and father, we come to you thanking you for the day and for all the blessings that you've given us in it. We thank you, dear God, for the health and the ability to get up and go and to work and just enjoy the community that we're blessed to live in, Lord. And as we conduct business here tonight, I just pray that you would guide our actions, our words, and our thoughts, dear God, and help us work collectively to make good decisions. And dear God, as we move throughout the rest of this week, I hope you would, and I pray that you would help us to pause, dear God, and think about what we celebrate this time of year. And I just praise you for loving us enough that you sent your son when we weren't worthy to forgive our sins, Lord. I ask these things and give you things in Christ Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Your presence here is confirmation of the form. And I take it you received your packet and had the chance to look at your minutes. And I'm looking for a motion to approve. So we have a motion to approve, but I have a second.
Second.
Sorry. If we get all over, okay. When we're in the process of approving the minutes, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed. And we have...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I got a contact from Scott Hurley who's going to represent some folks, I believe it has Mike Asbury with regard to item eight.
Yes, sir.
He has requested that that be moved to the April meeting. And I know we've done it in the past, so...
We have.
I think that that would be, there wouldn't be any need for citizen input on that particular matter.
Okay. We have a request that the item number eight, to the appeal of the decision of the zoning office regarding the Rock Quarry property in Piedmont by Mike Asbury, be postponed till the April meeting. And we also have a request that there be no citizens input on that matter tonight. I guess we need a motion to postpone. Wanted to entertain that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the offer from Mr. Asbury to postpone this decision until the April meeting.
Okay. Have a proper motion. Do we have a second? So have a second. Is there any discussion about this?
So their lawyer didn't show up?
I think he is here, but he just, I think he just got hired just recently. Oh, okay. And he hasn't had much time. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct. Yes, we are waiting some additional information, but we are, we will be ready later.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second. Any more discussion? Okay, now all those in favor of postponing till April, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, moving on down the agenda, we will have citizens input. And again, we're going to postpone that citizens input until the April meeting, if that's the reason you were here to speak tonight, based on their request. Yeah, do we, Stephanie, we have any other citizens input other than that? Okay. So moving on, we're to item number six. Variance request on setbacks for Lake Haven Kevin's lots 138 and 139 to be constructed on Tennessee Mountain Way by Landmark America LLC. Is there anyone here to represent?
Yeah, John.
How you doing, sir?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
He's on the planning commission later on for a six lot subbid.
Yes, sir.
And he needs a variance on these two on the end of that, what the cul-de-sac is going to be. And you've got a copy of it in your packet. Me and Jordan went out there to see the man, John, who looks at the property. Jordan said, oh, come on.
Which is the two end lots, huh?
Yep. The way the land lies, it, well, you can explain why you're asking. How about that?
Well, I own, on both sides of the property line, I own both sides. And the way that the, I have a, I have a road profile here for you, if it's helpful. But the way that the, the road lies and the land lies, I push that, those lots down the full thirty foot.
There it is.
It really increases the cost, it decreases the views on the cabin. And we just have to, we'd have to cut that road much more than what we should. Mr. Tipton was out and looked at the road as it was and liked it as it is. And I don't want to get into the planning meeting stuff, but...
Right. Mostly you'd have to move a lot more earth to comply with the SEP MAX, the way they're written. And this would prevent all that earth moving. So it's a topographical issue. I really don't see an issue with the variance. I don't have an issue with it, Tim.
No, I have, we, we have variance that we have, right? One plus?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions?
Just one.
Okay, okay.
So these lots here have never been approved before?
No, we're doing a little backwards, though.
Okay.
You're going to see it in the planning commission, and you'll need a variance before you approve it for the planning commission.
Have any other questions? Okay. What would the pleasure of the board be on granting a variance? That motion.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to grant this variance based on the topographical issues that exist with the road and the surrounding topography.
Okay. We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Everybody understands what we're voting on. All those in favor of... Saying aye? All opposed? Variance is granted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Moving down the, we're to item number seven. Variance request on the front property line of twenty-three feet for a house to be located at 2472 McQueen Way, Severn. By Keith and Lorraine Brown, Joint Family Trust. Is anyone here? Okay. Fair enough.
This is in Anglers Woods. And Jordan didn't have time to go over there. It's a little fur piece from here. And, but we give so many variances in that subbid over the years. I don't know if there's a lot over there that you can build on without a variance. That was done back in sixty, maybe? That subbid probably? Probably fifty, sixty, somewhere. And we give, over my twenty-five years, we give a bunch of variances over. I don't have a problem with it, and I don't think you would. You've got a copy of it, haven't you?
Yep, got a copy.
Yep, there you go. Copy, they see the lot.
What was the reason that we gave the very previous variance?
The lake.
Okay.
It drops off in the back.
Deposification.
They made those lots so small back in the day.
Yep.
Got a TVA flowage easement there on one side of the proposed structure.
We want to move the property line, there's two lots there that they own.
Yeah, you changing, yeah.
We've got to move down the property line to fit the house in there.
Shouldn't it take the lot line out?
And still get the septic and the reserve and everything.
This isn't anything uncommon for what we've done before in that area.
No.
Did we have any questions about this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so the septic tank, is it existing and the drain field's already there? Or not? That's where they've located them and said they have to go, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so there's no structure there at all on the property?
No, we're missing a lot.
Okay. So, uh, so basically what you needed is seven feet. So if we made you shorten the house, that would make it the house twenty-five feet. You wouldn't need a variance, correct?
Uh, no, I'd still need the variance.
You still need the variance. Okay. I thought it was...
Twenty-three.
Oh, he needs twenty-three feet, okay.
Twenty-three feet, yeah.
He needs twenty-three feet. Okay. Well, that more or less says you don't have a house size.
Right.
Yeah.
It's like all those lots.
Yeah, it's, it's, you're just, yeah, okay. Yeah, twenty-three feet, yeah.
To me, it's a reasonable, you know, that's why we have the variance. It fits roughly within the parameters of why we, why we have a variance to allow people to use their property within reason. And, you know, so I don't have, I don't see an issue with it from that standpoint.
I don't know that there's too many lots left over that it's not being built on. But if there are, we may see them again.
There's a few.
Okay.
Any further questions? And what's pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to grant this variance due to the fact that this lot, basically, when it was developed, was probably substandard in size. And with the location of where the septic tank and drain field is to make the lot functional, I would say that we would need to grant a variance of twenty-three feet in the front of this so that he can utilize the property from the structure.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the variance request, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. And we're, item number eight was postponed, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion to have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor of saying aye?
Aye. Turn. This yours? Weird.
Release. Yeah? Yes, sir. Okay. I guess we'd have something to do with this initiative that we have. Because it's been, this has been changed a little bit, too. Okay. We'll call the order of the meeting of the Jefferson County Planning Commission. And again, I hope you've had time to take a look at your minutes that were in your packet. And I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the notice.
We have a proper motion. We have a second?
Second.
Have any discussion? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes. Uh, do we have any citizens input tonight for the planning commission? Planning, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If you would, state your name and your address, ma'am.
Iran Knight, 440 West Main Street in Dandridge. In January of 2023, Mr. Scarlett made this motion at county commission. Regional Planning Commission is to proceed with starting to review all the zoning and regulations and what is involved in them and bring recommended updates to county commission. It passed fifteen to three. At that meeting, several commissioners expressed concern that regional planning would use this motion to create corridors of commercial and industrial zone property. Residents who responded to the long-range survey apparently got the same concerns. And their concerns appear to be relevant. You have spent months waiting for mets and overlays, didn't I, with Solan, so that you can create commercial and industrial corridors. How can you rezone large swaths of land without first deciding what is allowed in those zones? Doing this will change our county forever and for the worse. How can I say this? Because it happened where I came from. Big developers and big corporations took advantage of our lack of rules and established rules that fit them. We got more tax receipts, but those taxes came with traffic jams, contaminated water, contaminated soil, and cancer clusters. Our local area became a shell of its former self. Farms, forests, and open space disappeared, replaced by malls, office parks, and hotels. Chain stores pushed out local businesses. We lost our identity and our soul. Tax receipts became the new god of our area. This could be the legacy that you leave to this county. So please get back to the original task of reviewing zones and standards and realigning them. You must set the content, standards, and enforcement for zones before creating any so-called corridors. If you rezone first, you are opening a door that you could come to regret. Mr. Scarlett said in January of 2023, what we have in this county now pays the bills so we can be choosy about what is coming in. So listen to Mr. Scarlett. Be choosy. Look at what has happened in other areas that have traded their beautiful land for tax dollars. Consider Piedmont's Rock Quarry to be a preview of what could come. Please decide what's appropriate for each zone and then set standards. Do this before even thinking about blanket rezoning. If you rezone first, you will turn local control over to big developers and big corporations. And over time, this county too will lose its beauty and its soul. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, do we have a, Mr. Mike Foley?
Good evening. Mike Foley, 318 Oak Vista Drive in Dandridge. What public notices required when applying for a permit from TDEC? There are twenty-three different permits listed on their website, and the requirements appear to vary. This helps explain why mining notices are so easily missed. For example, TDEC recently issued an aquatic resource alteration permit for installation of riprap on Douglas Reservoir to control erosion. The applicant was required to post one sign at the site for thirty days, pay for a notice in the newspaper, and then provide proof that it was published. In contrast, a company has applied for a new mining permit near New Market. One sign was required at the site for thirty days, but there was no requirement to publish a notice in the newspaper. TDEC does post notices on their website, but you have to know where to find them. Otherwise, we are left with discovering one small blue sign posted somewhere in the county. Here are some details about what is planned just east of New Market. The parcel is zoned A1 and located south of US 11E. The one-hundred-page application dated July 2023 includes the following statements. Quote, "Site information: The area disturbed by quarrying, plant operations, stockpiles, roads, and other facilities and which may be disturbed in the next five years is approximately 294.98 acres. BWI owns parcel 33-128 that the Griselli Quarry is located. The site has not been mined in over sixty-five years." "Method of mining: Limestone will be blasted from the quarry and conveyed to a crushing facility on-site where it will be processed into various sized products. Once started, quarrying activities are expected to continue with the site for at least thirty years. The site will consist of active quarry pits, spoil areas, a stone crushing facility, a washing facility, and an office. There are no third-party facilities on-site," end quote. "TDEC issued a draft permit on December 28th of last year. Based on their website, the final permit has not yet been issued. So what happens now? Has there been any communication between this company and the county zoning office? Shouldn't a rezoning request from A1 to I1 be submitted and approved before mining operations commence on the site? Will Jefferson County take any action to prevent work from starting until that process has been completed? When you reach other business on your agenda tonight, please provide us with an update on this situation. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Stephanie, is that all the citizen input? You pass it back over. Okay, we have new business. And item number eight, or item, letter A, has been stricken. We're to B. Rezoning request from A1 Agriculture and Forestry to C2 General Commercial for property located on Lowry Loop Road, West Highway 11E by Edwards F. Otis III and Lisa Otis. Is anyone here to represent them? Okay.
Yes, how y'all doing?
This property is right beside the truck repair that's C2, I don't know, fifteen, sixteen years ago.
Okay.
But it's empty now.
Yes.
We rezoned it, I don't know, it's been several years ago. And it's going to be an acre, right?
Yes, it's an acre, or six and a half acres.
Right beside it. We build a building, you build a building.
The building, yeah, the building, yes.
And they're wanting RV repaired.
You've already built a building?
Yeah.
I had a building that, that I would do the storage and some of it.
Storage and a war.
Want to use it.
They're changing the use on an existing one.
It's sitting right up C2 property, correct?
Right next to, yeah. You got a map in there. And he's not cut the acre out, but I always tell him, don't cut it off until you see if it's going to get rezoned. You don't want to spend that survey bill that needs to get turned down.
So he's parcel fifty-nine, is that right? Sixty, he's parcel sixty.
Sixty, that.
Okay. Six and a half acres and they want the acre.
Right, I'm, I'm, I see it now, okay. For some reason, I thought that was already C2, and this was right between the two C2s.
No, it's right beside it.
It's right beside of it, okay.
C2 directly across the road from him as well, correct?
Looks, I don't know, right beside it.
Beside of it?
Right across the street, it's all part of the zone.
There is, directly there. And C2, that's right there. Does anyone have any questions?
Just one before we get, go too far in this. In the C2, is what he's asking for, what is the, what's the minimum lot size? C2, would we be rezoning something that he couldn't do for, if it was too small? Uh, I don't think so.
I believe it's forty thousand. Is this going to be a separate lot? It will be cut off here.
It'll be cut off eventually. We just, we, like I say, we, I just kind of sketched it out. Because if it didn't go through, I don't want to pay for it. And then, you know, yes, we'll, we'll have to survey it now.
Commercial without public water and sewer, forty thousand square feet with public water.
So he's going to have an acre, so he'll be, he's sufficiently sized, right? I just didn't want to get him, get down a mic, and then all of a sudden he's, we do this, and he doesn't have enough acres to do what he wants to do.
Right.
So before we do this, that building's already built?
He built that, it's just a garage.
I understand that.
Written.
But if that building's already built, is what he's going to do, going to fit a site plan on that thing? Because you're going to have to work around the building.
Well, I'd be up to survey, but I think it would be fine.
That would be when you submit the site plan, whether or not he meant to go.
He may have to get more acre, but it didn't look like it to me down there.
That's what I'm saying. Before we, before you rezone the thing, I...
He's fine.
Okay.
I think he's fine. He goes to... It goes to 20 feet, how far out from the back line are they?
Oh, from the, from the street line, from the back line? Yeah, I think I am at least 90 feet from the back line.
Yeah, I thought it was. You know, we used to plant corn there. Field there, so yeah, I think it looked fine.
Any further questions? What's plays the ball?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the recommendation for the rezoning to C2, from A1 to C2 for this property based on the fact that it's fronts on a major highway and also that there's existing C2 beside of it. That would be the recommendation to the Jersey County Commission.
We have proper motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Yes, second. Is there any further discussion? Everybody knows what we're voting on? All those in favor of rezoning the request from A1 to C2, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed? Letter C has, yeah, letter C has been stricken, and we will move on down to letter D.
Hey, thank you, sir, very much.
Preliminary final plat approval for Lake Haven cabins, phase 3A, dash 6 lots on Tennessee Mountain Ways River by Land Art America. Welcome back.
Good to see you.
I do have a little additional information. I didn't count this when I picked it up from the printer. I only have six copies for you.
I've got the letter from Charlie.
Okay.
Do we have any questions for him on this?
Basically, we already have approval for sewage disposal because it's already stacked for the whole development. So that part is taken care of. The water system is installed by his utility. So basically, that just leaves basically the road itself. In which case, then, we've got a performance bond.
And bond right there.
Does the performance bond, is it, I mean, I guess the thing is this, is the road bed already been constructed?
So the road bed is constructed, we don't have rock or asphalt on it?
Okay, so no rock or asphalt. So Mr. Shipley's good with the, with that part, I guess, the road bed. So basically, we're covered here for the remainder of the rock base and the asphalt, right? With this bond.
It just says 131,000. I have the breakdown for, for the rock, asphalt, and then all the utilities. I have, I do have that here.
Okay, if you would like.
There's, there's six here.
Oh, we know, I got the big sheet there.
I also, just for context, have the road profile there and have overall stuff, so you can see where this face sits as it relates to the rest of the resort. Got one more, sorry. Sorry, I'm short. So if you look, we've got Mr. Tipton's letter, then we have the bonding letter. And then you have Junior Homel's paving estimate. And then we have material pricing for our pipe for water and sewer, our blue and green pipe. And then we have the electrical supplies calculations. I'm a licensed general contractor. We have all our own equipment. And so we've got labor in that number as well, but it's fuel and man-hours.
So the labor is for your, for the installations in this?
No, that's just materials. So the core main, you're gonna see our blue line, which is our water, and then our green line pipe, which is our sewer. So that's our force main, our water main, and then our laterals.
So the additional amount of the bond, Josh, is for your all, covering all the labor, so.
Nobody else would do it for me for that price, but.
And that makes me wonder if we can get somebody to do it for that price. So I'm not saying it either way, I'm just saying that typically, on that, we usually have some other types of bidding, but, you know, in this instance here, he's bested.
I've got 9,000 linear foot of that stuff in the ground already, so. What's another 500?
Just for future, when you come back, I understand so far you performed. But just for future, if we're looking at the bonds, for me, I'd like to see that bond cover not what you're doing, or what you could do. Yeah. Because if, if you get struck by lightning and we have to exercise that bond, the statement you just made worries me to death, Josh.
I understand. So there's a pretty good chance I can have this all in before I come and get the, because right now, what I'm asking for is the approval contingent upon bond being placed. And I would not have a problem with increasing the price of that, that bond. But as soon as I have that approval, we're gonna go ahead and start putting it in the ground. So approval of final plat, giving staff the authorization to sign it when they have the bond, or, you know, when it's in the ground, I'm good either way.
Would you agree to have this in the ground before we approve the final plat and leave the bond at the same?
So, so that would be giving me preliminary approval tonight?
Yes.
So let me ask a stupid question. Is there any, is there any chance that I get preliminary approval? I put all that in the ground, and I don't get final approval?
I don't think if you've met all the requirements that are here, I don't know that we can not turn you down. In other words, if the improvements are there, based on this preliminary plat, and that's what you kept bringing to us on the final, and everybody signed off on it, it's, there should be really no discussion for us at that point in time. Because you've met, you've met the requirements. The only reason for the bond is, is it's basically saying, you know, because I guess the thing is this, is that you came here asking for a final tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so with the final, if we were to give you the final, then we would need the bond, which is what you have provided.
Correct.
We can give you preliminary as far as that goes for tonight, and you can go put it in, you can come back for a final, and you don't have to do this. There's no need for a bond, because it's, everything's finished.
Send me the bond premium.
Well, that's, that's your, it's your call, what you, how you want us to proceed with that, basically.
So for me, there's just something to be said for having a final plat and being able to move forward. But if you're not comfortable with that at the current bonding, then I would move forward with the preliminary, and I just put it in the ground. And then I guess at that point, what? Would we just have someone come back out and confirm that it's in?
Yes.
Yeah, we, yeah.
We'll serve letter from Avenus and.
Worried about you, sir.
No. The only thing that would pull me up potentially, well, as long as I have my infrastructure in. I don't know that SES, they've already opened the job. I don't know that they'll have the pole set and the wire pulled beforehand. But they would sign off on our ditch work. Is there a number that you'd be comfortable on the bond?
Well, I'm not, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do we require, I mean, and I'm not sure what our guidelines are. Sometimes we require one and one-half times whatever the amount for the work to be bonded. Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, Charlie, what's he said in his letter?
Well, he's, he's saying here that basically he's good with the amount for the road, which would have been for 31,500. Okay, so that takes care, that takes care of the road. And that's why I was just trying to do the math. And then the remaining part then is for the water line and the sewer line. And he's got a price in here for the materials, and included in that price for the materials is also installation labor, correct?
So, no, no, so if you go through those quotes and add it all up, it's not gonna, it's not gonna come out to that 131. I've got my internal on that. But the 1.15 on 131 would be 196.5. So I'd be fine with that. If that makes you more comfortable, I'd be fine with that.
So that's one and one-half times of what?
I would be fine with that. I just like, like I say, the part about so much of that, because I mean, you, you're, if you take Junior Homel's thing out of it, you're $100,000, so you are 80%, 75% on of this bond is.
Me performing.
Is you performing. And it's not that I doubt you're gonna perform, but.
If I walk out of here and get hit by a truck, the county needs to be able to pay somebody else with that bond.
Yes.
I understand.
Well, here's what would happen, is basically when the bond ran out, we go after, we go after the property owners. They would be responsible. Yeah, so, and that's why we try to get away from hopefully on that, so.
It's probably worth it to me to get the bond premium and then not have to be pressing for a month-end planning meeting. If it takes me 45 days versus 30, depending on weather, I come in and we can just be off to the races.
If it's one and a half times, I'm comfortable with, with going that, but I'm just not on the other, for me.
That's fair.
Do we need that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that motion. If he'll increase it to one and a half times, I'm comfortable to move this forward and make the motion.
Okay. You want to prove a final contingent on receipt of that, or?
Contingent on receipt of that. We gotta have, Mr. Tim's got to have that in hand before it's, signs off.
What's the number?
196, 128.50.
Okay. Okay, we have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second, and do we have any other discussion? Everybody knows what we're voting on here. So this people final contingent upon the bond being delivered to Tim at that amount, that 196.528.50.
Okay, you. So the numbers are based off your labor cost? So the material numbers? A good portion of it. Actually, it's a minor, it's a minor portion of it, yes. But one and a half, somebody else could do it for that. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Could you, how does that work so he doesn't come back?
The bond is what it needs to be. He'll get a final, he'll get signed off on that at that point in time, once we have that bond in hand.
Okay. Yeah, I'll sign it, but.
But he won't get, he'll ask for release of the bond.
Yeah.
Okay. But at that point, at that point in time, it means he's done everything, so.
If you look at page 24 in subdivision regulations, you all, you actually don't have a set amount. It just says the amount of the improvement, so you can set it at what you'd like.
We've, we've been using one and a half times on several projects. So that's kind of, and based on the material, I mean, you're taking in material, you're multiplying it by one and a half times, which he's got quotes on materially, and he's got an offsite third-party on his paving. That figures into the whole thing, so you're catching that, so the labors, at that point, you're, you're covered on that. That's why we kind of have been using that number, Jordan.
Makes sense.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of giving final plat approval, contingent upon the bond being placed for 196.528.50 to Tim? Let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, E was stricken, so we're on the letter F. Site plan review for the proposed tablet compressor station at Tabit Candace Road, off Tabit Candace Road, tablet by East Tennessee Natural Gas LLC.
Good evening.
Hello, sir.
Art Haskins, manager of stakeholder engagement for East Tennessee Enbridge. And John Heinz, our project manager, provided, or I have some drawings as well as informational sheet. We should have the one page here that talks about our project. So just a little bit of background, this is an interstate natural gas pipeline. East Tennessee Natural Gas provides, this section of it runs from National through this area, connects over by Knoxville, continues on through this area all the way up to Roanoke, and then a branch goes down into North Carolina. We had a notice to FERC and announced this project back in January of '21 and Federal Interstate Regulatory, or Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Through that process, there's a NEPA process, National Environmental Protection Act, filing all the paperwork. Along with that, we had two landowner meetings, a public informational meeting. Talked with a number of local officials, as well as on all of our other permits for the larger project, which includes not only this compressor station, but the pickup, or flipping a pipe in Knox and Sevier Counties, a relay in Washington County, Virginia, as well as a mill construction in Rockingham County, North Carolina. So specifically here, this is the piece of property that we have acquired, right on our pipeline. And this is the plot plans and all the other things that are in the planning and zoning requirements. So we provided that information to you guys. It is a natural, interstate natural gas pipeline system, and we did receive our FERC certificate. So we are approved by FERC to do the next steps, which is our, is our implementation plan and notice to proceed, and then we'd be able to start construction. So that's where we're at in this bigger process. If you have any questions, I have John here as well, but I'm here tonight, working to, at the request of the director, give us information in another public presentation, so.
I don't know if they really needed to come before you all, but I thought it'd be best if you did. I've had a few calls over the year about it, and what's going on up there, you know, neighbors, so. When he contacted me, I thought it'd be good if you all just said site plan. What is, what is FERC?
Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They manage the Natural Gas Act. So it's an interstate natural gas pipeline. Basically, we're exempt from local planning and zoning, but we do connect and work with local planning and zoning where we can and where it's needed. In this case, it's a compressor station right on our pipeline, and so it's really all kind of covered by that Natural Gas Act. We do, we did have landowner meetings, and some of the things we have done, as you can see the drawing there, I mean, we purchased a bigger piece of land than what we need. We offset from the road as much as we, as we could, or what made sense for it, because that was a request from them locally. There is some vegetation planning there, that was another request. Working on the lighting, the style of, you know, all those types of things. I met with the volunteer fire department, Kent's top, and they requested us to put in a fire hydrant. Worked with the local utility district and put in a fire hydrant there as well. So we've we've done those types of things as much as we can. Electrically driven compressor station, so it'll be electric. That's why there's a there's gonna be a substation there and and sort of be quieter than a a gas driven one. There will be a tower there and the compressor.
This will be operating out of transmission voltage and not distribution voltage, correct?
That's perfect.
Are you gonna use full cutoff lights, semi cutoff or?
We're gonna use full cutoff, um, for the most part. When in areas where we need it, they'll be manually operated. You know, if we're out there in the middle of the night, we need something lit up, we'll have a manual switch. But that won't be, uh, you know, the norm, right? Normally, we'll just have cutoff lights and we'll just have, um, you know, lighting that'll come on dusk to dawn just to illuminate out there so that, you know, the cameras and everything are still working. And then if we had to get out there in the middle of the night, then we'd switch on lights. It is a, all of these, it is interstate, are considered part of homeland security. And there are certain permits that we have for fencing and and those types of things and lighting and cameras and stuff, so. It is critical infrastructure for homeland security, so that's a part of the process there. It's a shame we gotta think about that stuff, but we do.
Are tornado shelters, is that part of your overall plan for?
It is, we have a tornado shelter at the facility.
The VFD building, what what does, what's that constitute to every side of the electric control panel?
That's that's it. Electrical control panel.
Oh, okay, the VFD building, okay.
Yeah, variable frequency.
Okay, I got you, okay. It's by understanding that that it's mandatory for you to have community meetings as far as your permitting process, isn't it?
There there is mandatory community meeting, the landowner meetings have been extra or aren't just that extra.
Do we have any further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So I know, I'm looking at the legend, I know the red line, you have a fence that that borders the whole thing. Are there fences around specific areas within that? Like that line right there, or is that a building?
Uh, that's a building.
Okay.
So there'll just be a perimeter fence.
Perimeter fence, okay.
And there's a couple old barns out there, a couple old sheds, they'll be torn down. And that's also at the request of lo- local landowners.
Do we have any more questions? Being known, what's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, uh, for approval of this site plan, uh, as it is presented to us.
We have a have a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, any discussion? All those in favor, let me know my thing, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it. Thank you, gentlemen. And we are to letter G on the agenda. Site plan review for a new building to be constructed on existing industrial property at eight oh six Whittaker Road, Newmarket, by Michael Boe.
Well, this is a. Not it's like, uh, Whittaker. Have all my life, but anyway.
Surprise you got home at night.
A little bit back east, actually. But, uh, I knew where Rocky Valley was. And he's building, I think it's a forty by forty behind the.
Plus showing with a twenty-foot lean-to?
Yeah, behind the building that he's got there, or he needs more warehouse space, I think, what he's doing. I didn't see no problem with him.
Where's the property line?
It's not shown on this map.
Yeah.
It's it's conservative back over, cause his house is back here. It's back past the house.
It's not a part of this though, right?
No, it's not, it's he cut that off, but his house is.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be on there, I mean, that's too far, it should be on there.
See any with the property lines? Is this right here?
Look at where he cut off his house. Oh, I think, yeah, there's no problem on that.
So is the blue line, is that supposed to be a property?
Right down here.
That's where he cut off his, the two point two one acres and there's twenty-nine acres left of existing property.
Yes, okay.
Just wonder where it is here, I don't know it's probably probably back. Yeah, I don't think it's anywhere near.
So it will have setback issue?
No, it looks like it.
Well, how many feet off the property line is it?
Is it twenty for a building?
Uh.
Are you familiar with this property?
Front fifty feet, rear twenty-five.
Yeah, he's twenty-five.
Cause part of that, uh, where it's grown up down here, Atwood, it goes up in there towards that of the house. Quite a ways, lot farther than I thought start with when we did this plat, I mean, when he did the first.
If it's an accessory building, if we're gonna consider that, it's only ten feet, but FYI. Yeah, I don't think it's connected.
It's not, it's not, it is an accessory.
It's not the principal, so.
Really ten feet would be.
Ten feet's always gotta be, you got plenty.
Yeah. Over that.
Yeah, it should it should be on the plat, but we're confident, staff's confident that he's well off the property line.
Which one of those is the?
The highlight, it's it's not gonna be up here on the Tennessee map.
Oh, okay.
But it the total acres there, the thirty-two would be those two put back together, the two point two one and the twenty-nine point oh nine.
Oh, okay.
If that's that piece of property.
You probably need to let him know where's Tim. They come in, they need that. I don't know who did the Cory Jenkins.
Cory Jennings.
Jennings.
Don't know his.
Don't know him.
Getting hard to find the surveyor.
I gotta see him more.
Well, I would say what it is, he didn't want to have to pay the surveyor, survey the whole track out.
Yeah, I'd say. I still think for future reference, I'd like to see the prompting lines.
Well, they need to be on that. There's so we can tell the distance for sure, but he's he's well off the line because it's.
Well, I see the hundred and sixty-eight here off the two point two one.
What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, let me know my thing, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it. We are now to letter H, discussion of land use plan, possible rezoning of Jefferson County, time permitted. Your turn.
All right, uh, can we pull up? What we like to do is put up on the screen the land use, uh, map number. And I'm gonna bring out a, I'm gonna bring out a. You may. I wouldn't.
I said, where'd Jordan go, and he said he went to get Nix, I said, no, he didn't, he left.
He might have went wrong, don't worry.
That's a man. That's how I've heard Jordan, cause I have heard nothing about it in a way formal fashion. Do you hear anything about the Chris Lee deal? The Chris Lee mines deal, do you hear anything much about that, other than the Chris Lee mines deal?
Just rumors is all.
I think it's, uh, I think it's more a play with the rock company than it is anything. There's some issues going on, you know.
Yeah.
We were burned, get it to the.
That's blue water.
Blue water.
It was, that was Bayous out of Florida.
Right.
We did it on computer, but why don't we get those somewhere?
Anyway, they sold bad and they formed blue water. And then they bought all the offshoots out of the the thing in this near stop.
Oh, yeah. That's when I was saying. That's exactly, I come back in. He come back in, joins us on the backside, and we've actually got a quarry on our property. An old quarry, like in there in my buddy's house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ain't a lot of rock there, evidently, they've never hunted one.
Whole hill is rock. You can look in the footwell.
See how things go.
Maybe just go through one at a time, don't have to get through all of them at once. Will you move anymore?
Yes.
I might just stick in this guy, try to move.
Done, man.
Okay, here's the zoning, can you send it? You gotta get sending books.
Yeah.
Like a commercial break.
Little jingle, jingle of work.
Make some game for him.
He likes to play the ball games.
I have got a, uh, bush mail. Yeah, I hope it can catch up.
Show up at the baseball game, Stu?
I don't know.
He's doing basketball.
Yep, he's a he's a guy that would count.
If he is, I'm a, I wanna go watch some of his stuff.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm telling you, there's.
I'm actually returning this account.
You might pull in Sterling's there with this.
You know, I don't, but I know, I don't take guys, they're like, God, uh, baseball team, they're big baseball teams.
So this is only map, must be, so the zoning map is here, is for this quad up here that we started, we're gonna talk, start at, is that right?
Is it, do you see it there?
Right here, sitting there, zoning.
It's about that area. One is there, I put it up on the. Okay, they got it. Okay. All right, that's what I was looking for, I thought, I don't have one here for that. I wanna try to make sure the audience can see. Land use map up there, zoning map here. So, you know, zoning is much easier to see. You don't need as big of a surface area, so I think we can kinda see that. And then if the audience wants to move closer to it, you can. This is the best we could come up with, at least at this moment, so.
There is that.
Can we not get anything on the? Yeah, we're having a little trouble, sorry. I have technical difficulties here. You know, I don't know, there was a comment earlier about rezoning corridors to commercial or industrial. I don't know that that's the goal here, at least that's not.
Well, let let me say something about that, and and I wanna say something to the audience. I don't know that we're talking about rezoning. What we had discussed on here was doing overlays, because one of the complaints was that I didn't know this. I didn't know this was gonna be beside me, I didn't know this could be beside me. So what we had talked about was not a rezoning as much as doing overlays and saying, these are the areas where we want business to grow, because infrastructure's already there, power, roads, water, all that. And whether we're gonna admit it or not, and it hurts my heart, because I've lived on that four lane all my life, but that four lane at some time will be commercial or industrial. Every four lane road in the county, Miss Sue, will be commercial or industrial at some point or time. I mean, it's just the way the world works. It develops out to four lane, it develops out to logistics. So I don't know that when we're looking at this, Jordan, I don't know that rezoning is the proper term, rather than just a overlay to say, hey, if you come to this county as a business, we would prefer you to look at these areas here, because we really don't want a Ford plant in the bend of the river out there in Newmarket. The roads just won't handle it. But if a business comes in and goes on ninety-two somewhere off ninety-two, that's not a bad plan, or if it goes off sixty-six, that's not a terrible plan. Or at least it's not to me.
And in terms of rewriting the zone, I have a question about the long range planning committee. Is that supposed to, are they supposed to develop a master plan with a consultant?
That's what they're doing.
That is what they're doing, yeah. Okay, so that should include a future land use map and, I mean, that, which is, you know, we're we're doing a kind of an overview analysis here, but that should include that as well and also recommended zoning changes.
So there's, so.
There are some recommendations that have come out.
Would, of course I would.
I've got a stack of the of it right here.
If the if the consultant's gonna kind of distill them, then great, I mean, you know, distill them together into their own format or whatever, that's cool. So I don't have to look at the individual forms, you know, if they're gonna distill the comments. But I'm just saying that if we're gonna rewrite the zoning or tweak it or revise it or whatever, then it would be helpful to have those.
They had to take the nasty comments out.
Yeah, the curse words.
That's not a joke.
Oh. But so that is gonna end in a master plan, a proper master plan, a future land use map. And zoning, recommended zoning changes, if that's what that's gonna end up in, I don't know. I think this is more just a workshop format, just just as a as a, uh, exercise here for the planning commission.
Well, to Mr. to what Mr. Scarlett had to say. You're, are you framing it as a suggestion to people coming to the county?
No, what I'm saying is that that is not, you go down through there and you start rezoning everybody without somebody asking. And that's that's an issue, and there's gonna be a lot of heartache and hard feelings, folks, and I'm gonna tell you.
Absolutely.
And I, for me, I'm not so much want to rezone it, but I do want to try to solve the issue. And one of the main issues that we kept hearing a year or so ago was, I didn't know this could be, I didn't know this could have. a year or so ago, was I didn't know this could be, I didn't know this could happen. This takes it all out, if you do an overlay, not a rezonement, but an overlay that says, and one of the things that, according to Commissioner Snodgrass, that came out of there, is they wanna con, they wanna push areas, hey, this, this needs to be more open, this needs to be this or that, in different areas of the county. And if you're gonna come up with a land use plan, is that not what it is, Jordan?
Yes, and that, that informs your rezonings in the future.
Yeah, so, so if you have that, the first thing, it would appear to me, that if you, you would like all of the commercial, or as much as possible, or industrial, to go in areas that already have logistical infrastructure. Already have power from AEC, that you don't have to rerun all the lines, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you don't have to put in an exit. You, you want it to go towards places, so we can do overlays that says, hey, this, this is what we'd like to see. Now, we can't force that, because we don't, we don't have, we're not writing a check, and when it boils down to it, that's what it, if you can't write the check for the ground, there's not a lot you can do. Somebody can buy it and they can cut it up in subdivision, I'd like to see it stay as a farm. But if I don't have the money to do it, it don't make any difference. But what we can do is, we can say, if you're coming to the county for business, we'd like you to consider these areas. These are the areas that we'd like to designate, we'd like to see develop first. Because they have logistics, they have water, they have power, there's not an issue with traffic, there's all of this, so if we do that, I don't know that I wanna ever start down and forcefully rezone things that somebody's sitting there and saying that they're A1 or R1, or whatever it is. I would rather see the landowner, if they sell it, or the person that purchased it, come and ask for the rezonement. That forced rezonement's gonna create a lot of heartache and discord, folks. Yes, and we did it once before.
If you remember when we did the, the new highway from Bushes to Newport, and we sent a letter out to everybody on that highway to see if they were interested in commercial, you know where they're interested?
Yeah.
Nobody wanted it. They showed up against it, so we never did it.
And, and I know to Mr. Terry's point, we've done it, this, the board has done it before, but I don't know, I don't know that there's not a better approach in doing the overlays as a forced rezonement.
Yeah, well, when you say overlays, I think that what I would say a future land use map, or a comprehensive plan with a map for future land use, and it's not a, you're not compelling anybody to do anything, you really can't, you're just setting the guardrails, basically, and, and trying to attract people.
Would that be a land use plan?
Land use plan, land use plan goes into text, more detail of what each zone, what you envision each district to look like, and things like that, but the, the map itself is, to me, the main product of a, of a, of the whole thing. This is how we want the county to look in twenty, thirty years, this is where we wanna see industrial growth, or this is where it's appropriate. You can't force it, but this is where we think it's most appropriate. This, you know, you have neighborhood commercials, C1, you have a C1 zone, you have two commercial zones, um, plus an industrial. Neighborhood commercial can go closer to residential areas, the more intense commercial should be kept uh, away, industrial and more intense commercial should be kept more away from those residential areas, things like that. Instead of just having haphazard growth and development, the, the master plan at least gives you some kind of vision. And you get the public feedback from people, so you kinda know what people's interests are, what their, what their views are, what they'd like to see, and then you, you compile that and, and you work it into the recommendations for um, uh, changes to the zoning text, changes to the zoning map, to the future land use map, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I'm wanna make sure that that's, that is what the long range, so you have a consultant that is under contract.
They were contracted to do the survey.
Forty-five thousand dollars worth of contract.
To do the survey and.
To do the survey and then recommendations are coming out of that.
Is that up with?
I think they're just finishing compiling the uh, the comments.
Okay, but in actual, in actual comprehensive land use and transportation plan, it's not been.
That's not in the deal.
No.
That is not in the deal.
Well, now that doesn't mean the long range committee won't assess that.
The long range committee is, they've got, they'll have recommendations and they'll be coming out with a thing, but as far as we've contracted with somebody to make the plan, Jordan, no, that is, that is not.
Is that a, is that a possibility, is that?
Yeah, I think that's a possibility.
Okay, it probably should be, to be honest, I mean, I, you know, from what I'm hearing, that, that people wanna get a handle on growth on the front end and, and get out in front of it. You know, a comprehensive land use and transportation plan is not a magic bullet, it's not gonna give everybody everything they want, I mean, it's, it's, it's a guiding document, it's a visioning document, to put everybody's thoughts together, all the stakeholders who wanna be involved, who should be involved, et cetera, uh, to, to get their heads together, to figure out, try to think out into the future. Most growth and development happens haphazardly, you know, um, in areas that, that don't have a strong regulatory state, and so you end up growing in ways you don't wanna grow, but if you lay it out and you say, okay, this is how we'd like to grow, then your, your regulatory approach adapts based on that, you change your regulatory approach based on your, your, your first vision, your first principles there, laid out, as well.
So how do you do that without infringing on property rights?
Are you talking about changing zoning regs, is that, that approach, is that what you're saying?
So you have.
That will come out of this, yes.
So you have a real piece of property, okay, and it's a farm, as far as that goes. And the guy says, you know what, I wanna sell my farm, it's my right to sell my farm, as far as that goes. But then, we, we, in, in restrictive zoning as far as that goes, you're gonna limit the value of that in comparison to someone that has something very similar in another zone, that is, has less stringent zone. It's, because it's, it's, it may be worth more. So how do you, how do you go into that area right there and do these things, as far as that goes, without infringing on their property rights? That, that's, that's the issue I got.
We do that now, zoning is an infringement of property rights.
We do, you know, we do, I, 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 I see it every day, that's why I hate the growth boundary, I think it's a, it's an arbitrary line, as far as that goes, but it, from, from a value standpoint, though it doesn't show up in the tax records, as, from that standpoint, but from a value standpoint, it affects which side of the line that you're on, okay? So, I, I don't want that to have a bearing, in other words, i- if you looked at our land use plan before, and you, and you go back and look, the goal was, was this, was to push high density development toward the towns, into the, into the growth boundaries into the towns. Okay, that's, that's sort of been accomplished, but what you find is, is that you can't make people go live there. You can entice them, you can say, this is whatever, but if you look, I mean, just look at this map, why is it then that you have, oh, this, this area over here, that's just completely just as rural as you could think about, you have to go into another county to even get there. But look how many parcels there are. So why is that, Jordan? Why then, with that, with the way that was zoned right there, why is it then that people still wanna come there and live? Is it because of the lake, the water, whatever? Okay, that, that could be part of it. So I'm saying is, is that, I've seen it before, I, I, where we tried to herd people and say, well, this is where we wanna go, that doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna go there, 'cause I've seen developments that where we've talked to people and said, this would be a great place for residential development, I've seen it set there for seven years before they sold the lot. And then I've seen other developments out here, and I thought, you know, we fought tooth and nail, and then just sailed out in a day. So it's, you know, I, I understand where we wanna push growth, but I'm just saying, when you push people, they don't always wanna go there. And, you know, they don't wanna go there, but they don't wanna be, you know, but then again, it, it comes back to this, you know, they, they don't, they don't want, the people that are here, okay, the people that are here don't want that to happen, okay? They don't want it to happen, but the property owner's sitting there saying, well, you sure have tied my hands, and so, but, because of, because of, of this.
Yeah, that's the long range planning process, you balance the interests of developers, business people, entrepreneurs, people that wanna grow, people that wanna develop, versus those that want no growth, those that want smart growth, you got, not all growth is the same, you have some growth that is higher quality than other growth, um, so that's important to keep in mind, you wanna try to encourage that with regulations if you can. You wanna protect the public realm and, and, you don't, you don't just want cancerous growth.
But the way we typically do that is, because we really don't restrict, unless we're just gonna come out and say, this is a farm and you can't build a house on it. We're never gonna get to that point, correct?
No, and it's.
So we're go, so if we, if we give the guy the right to subdivide his land, the way we control him basically now is, the way we control him is, is we say, this is your minimum lot size. Alright, so this is your minimum lot, so that's how we control those people out there that, that may wanna do these things, is, is, is through their minimum lot size. The other thing that controlling factory is, is the title score and those types of things. But when you look at it, and, and here's the thing, with, with the drives residential typically is this, is that when somebody starts into developing, in these properties as far as that goes, they're gonna look, they're, they're putting their money up, they wanna come out with the maximum amount of money in the end that they possibly can, that makes perfectly good sense, that's just a market driven thing, okay? So the question, the question I have is, is that, but we, we penalize those people there on their land because maybe they could have gotten smaller, more tracts or whatever, but we're saying, no, this is, because this is the way we wanna keep it, we do not want any kind of higher density than that. You know, I, I don't know if you kept up.
You're referring to regulations now, and these.
No, I'm talking, I'm, that's the zone, lot sizes is zoning.
Well, someone's gonna lose either way.
Somebody's gonna lose either way, I'm just saying, how bad do they lose?
And, and what value does the public good, you have to factor that in as well. If you're just looking out for the private interest, you're gonna end up with ugly cancerous growth, in my mind. You, you have to look out for the public interest as well, that has to be affected, but, I wanna say, it's, it's a gradual thing, it's not like this is the whole point of doing the visioning thing, bringing the stakeholders together, which includes business people, it includes, uh, you know, all kinds of different residents and, um, all kinds of different stakeholders in the community, and you try to get the vision, you try to get a vision together, and then gradually over time, you work towards it.
Exactly with long range.
Yeah, it's not like you're overnight, you're changing everything and saying, okay, no more development until we get, figure out what's going on.
So, we've, we've had that, and, and it don't seem to work.
Question, stupid question. Who owns industrial parks? Does the county own that land and they lease it out to cars?
It, it comes under different things, there are some land that is owned by the, that the title is held by the industrial board, if they have a pre-existing tax abatement, that title is held in the industrial board's hands. Once that tax abatement goes away, the title is transferred back to whoever is in there. And at the, the time, let's take for instance, some of these over here, there's, all of that's gone over the years, and so, whatever company is, they own and the deed is in their name. Now, the commission several years ago should have entered into a thing and told the industrial board, we're not, we don't really like tax abatements. And one of the reasons that Miss Marion, the comment, she was referencing, that I said we can be choosy, that was made in reference to some of that. We are, right now, the last things that have come into the county, we pay for the jobs, Oshkosh over there, we pay for jobs. We don't have a tax abatement with Oshkosh, they have the title in their name.
Who owned that land before Oshkosh?
Uh, what was it? Uh, can't even think, it was the, the warehousing distributor guy.
John, uh, John Deere.
It originally started out as a John Deere, John Deere did not own it, but they developed the ground, but the title resided with the industrial board, because they had a tax abatement, and so when the tax abatement run out, John Deere run out. So it didn't work out all that well, so we come up with a better program, and right now, Oshkosh came in and bought that ground. They possess the title, we don't give them any tax abatement, what we do is, we said, for your, and I think it was originally thirty million dollar investment. How many jobs are you bringing in? They said, we're bringing in three hundred. We said, that's fine, we take their investment, by the, divided by years, divided by the number of jobs, each job is worth X. So at the end of the year, they have to bring their W2s over, and their average payroll, the first year was only, oh, I think it was a little under two hundred, I mean, I'm not, don't quote me on that figure, but it, it did not reach the threshold of three hundred. So we took X and we multiplied it by the number of jobs they created, and we handed them a check. And they got that much money back for coming to Jerrison County and being a good citizen. So we don't do tax abatements.
Right, but who sold that land to John Deere? Did the land owner?
The land owner actually sold it to John Deere. There was a, there was a land owner that had that property. They sold, they sold it to, not to John Deere, but a, a company that John Deere owns that does their development. That development company said, hey, we want a tax break, they had to hand over the title to the industrial board for the tax break. So once all of that got cleared out, and we got done with that, that's not something we'd like to go back to, we would, it's easier just to write a check for how many jobs they created, based on their investment in the county. It's a way cleaner thing, and, and they actually, Oshkosh has said they actually like that, because they retain title, they don't have to turn that over, they can use it on their books, you know, whatever.
Can you talk to the landowners on Eleven A? And get, or, or the county buy it, and then?
County don't have enough money to buy the land going down Eleven A, I can tell you that right now.
It, it's not as if, it's not as if that, that, that every one of those parcels is just gonna be bought overnight, okay? But through time, here, here's, here, here's what happens is, the rea- reason I, that I like the overlay was this, is that somebody comes in here and they wanna do something, okay? If it's there, I don't wanna, I don't want them to have to fight tooth and nail to get it. It's hard to recruit, it's really hard to recruit businesses, and the more that you restrict and everything else, the harder it is to come here, because somebody else is saying, I'll take you, okay? I'm just saying that it shouldn't be hard to get what you want in these overlay areas, things approved. Now, I understand, and Marion brought it up, and, and, and here's again, and I know this has gotta be part of it, it's gonna have to happen. So, when we go back, and we say, we look at the overlay areas, and we're gonna say, we're gonna put these zones would, we're saying, this could happen and you could get these properties rezoned in this overlay area, okay? Because this is, we said this is the future and that could happen, alright. But when you look at everything that's allowed in each individual zone?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, well, alright, so, so that's gotta change along with it. There are things here, and, and basically, I can just guarantee you, that the long use, this, this long use plan addresses items that people don't want, okay? They don't want, as far as it goes, because it's already listed in our zoning, okay? They'll tell you, nobody likes A1 zoning because of the things that are in there. It hurts some people, it hurts a lot of people, that we have to do here, because people are saying, oh my gosh, if I let them, if I rezon this, then I could get this, I could get that, we understand that, okay, there's some risk involved. But we could take all that risk out, it's very simple for us to take it out.
We, I still, we don't rezone property, though.
We don't rezone property, but what I'm saying is, is that basically is this, is that when it comes downtime, and you do it, and you send in, you say, okay, this is my zone in, in, in here, and this is what we're gonna allow, but what you're gonna do is, you're gonna say, this is allowed maybe under exception, or it's allowed with restrictions and everything else. It's just not gonna be cut and dry anymore, in other words, if somebody says in a, in an A1 zone, I'm gonna build a grocery store, well, we may not say, we may say, no, not necessarily, okay? Uh, we may say that, yeah, there's an area here that's on A1, it might make a good grocery store, as far as it goes. But just because it's zoned that way, I, we, I think when we, when we restrict it, when we put the conditions on it, in those zones, and my thing is, is that some, uh, I want to, either that, or we're gonna put, leave them in where they're at, but they'll be, they'll just be under there under, uh, I want to, either that, or we're gonna put, leave them in where they're at, but they'll be, that they'll just be under there under, uh, under review.
Performance standards.
Performance standards, and everyone will be there under review. Now, that being said, that's fine, okay? Because we've got these things here and we've addressed them all before, and we know what's there. But the problem we run into, the problem you run into is, is that then when you come down the pike, it's when something new comes along. When something new comes along, then you gotta make that decision, and, as far as that goes. And, you know, so, but that being said, you could still go in there and say, well, you know what sort of fits here, and you can put those conditions and everything else on it. But like I say, we, we know what we, we know what we have now. We know what's in the county. That's why I request this map here, so that you can see that out here, that just because we have it zoned a certain way, that there are other things that exist right now, industrial and commercial-wise, that we don't have zoned that way.
So question, Jordan. We review whatever zone, pick one, I-one, I-two, whatever. We review that as we go along in this process. We're gonna say, okay, yeah, we're gonna have that in here, no, we're not. So the person that has that property right now, and it's zoned I-one, what, how does it walk me through how it happens if we, are they grandfathered in for everything we have now? Or if you change the zone, it's no longer allowed in there?
Right. They're not grandfathered in, unless they, unless they're already operating that type of business. So, if someone's an I-one and they're doing something, I-one is the most permissive zone we have. In terms of intensity of land use, that's, I mean, that's the most so. Uh, it'd be more, well, it could be I-one, whatever. If you're an I-one, C-one, C-two, whatever it is, and we recommend the Long Range Planning Committee, or the Planning Commission, wherever recommends changes to the zoning text, um, re- re- recommends zoning text amendments to the county commission, county commission passes. It has to go through the whole process for that to happen. So, there is an opportunity for public comment through the whole thing, and for people to be notified, and, um, I think people in Jefferson County seem to be pretty good at, you know, spreading the word around about what's going on, so I think people will find out. But, um, basically, I-one and it, you've got these allowed uses right now, and we change that, and now-
So is, is I-one, they're operating a machine shop, uh, they wanna put in a, I don't know, a, a chemical plant, and you've taken the chemical plant out?
If they haven't already submitted plans and been approved, then they're not grandfathered.
Okay, so that's not, we don't have any problem with, with changing?
Cause it's a change of occupancy and use.
Right. Unless they're already in operation, they're not grandfathered in, that's bottom line.
So they can't count on whatever's there, like, uh, let's say A-one is, uh, Mr. Terry brought up, building a grocery store or convenience store or whatever.
Right.
They-
They'd have to get rezoned, or-
Well, they're all, let's say they're already A-one.
Yeah.
So unless they've started putting into, so, a C-two or whatever.
Right.
Then, that goes away as one of their options.
Well, unless they, they, you have to get rezoned.
Yeah, but they couldn't do it in
No.
that particular zone anymore.
Right.
Okay.
Unless we'd already approved a plan for it, uh, that'd be the only exception. If, let's say we had approved a plan, but they hadn't constructed it yet, they were in the process of procuring the, the materials or, you know, whatever, it's, it's not grandfathered. So, you know, you take it, you tread lightly. You take it seriously when you make these changes, especially if you're gonna do a lot of changes to zoning. It's a big deal. It affects people's property rights for us.
So when we start down this process, how do we figure out, cause when you pull that Jenga block out here, to keep that zone from toppling over, or, or says that we cannot zone out a legal business.
Right.
We've gotta have a zone for it, or they, they can do it anyway.
Yeah.
So we don't have any regulation, they can do it anyway, whatever zone it is. So how do we figure out what particular zone that fits in, in the best thing?
You, you, you have meetings, you, you talk about it amongst stakeholders, staff, elected officials. Where do we wanna see it? Where does it make the most sense in terms of layout of the county? You know, where, where would it be, where would we eli- eliminate or reduce the risk of nuisance? If that, if that use were to be developed, you know, on, on a particular, in a particular area. The nuisance is gonna, is gonna guide, it's gonna be a major guiding factor for that.
People are gonna ask you for a definition of that.
Yeah, what's the, what, what's the litmus test for nuisance? So-
Nuisance is a common sense question. You can look it up, and, and that is what, is, that's the whole reason why we have zone, to prevent nuisance. Nuisance, it could be a noise, it could be an odor, it could be dust, it could be, uh, and there are certain land uses that produce more of those things than others. A single-family residence is probably not gonna be a bird's quality of life.
Standards is to what, the maximum nuisance that you're gonna be allowed, correct?
Yes.
So, and then, so which means that's a, kind of creates the enforcement issue to, to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
So, at the, if you create that, then do we, at that same time, have to create the standard of what the punishment is? Because I feel like this is violated. He's not got enough hours in the day.
He got plenty of time, dude.
I mean, the Braves are on, it's gotta, you, you got to, no, I'm kidding. But how, how do we come up with that, and what is the?
Well, you're talking about two different, you got, on the front end, you have performance standards where you try to zone, you try to hit it on the front end and say, okay, these particular uses are, have a lot of nuisance potential, for noxious odors, uh, loud noises, lighting, whatever, you know, that, that is going to be a nuisance to their neighbors, and so we're going to restrict these uses to these particular zones that aren't near residential. I mean, that, that's, that's a, that's a big chunk of the nuisance. And so, but then, but then, once you've done that, if somebody, like, if you have a noise decibel limit for certain, at the property line, for certain uses in your performance standards or whatever, and then somebody's going above that, then you get into code enforcement on back end. And, and yeah, then the county has to send them a letter.
So is that us that creates the part of enforcement? Or we don't have to worry about that? We're just concerned with the-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Getting it in the right place?
Yeah, I think you wanna make sure it's enforceable, that the county does have the staff and, and that kind of thing, staff to, whatever it is that, that you need to enforce. So you don't wanna, we don't wanna do, iron that out a hundred percent in a planning committee or, or group or whatever. Um, you just kinda talk to the staff and say, okay, what can we do? What do we, what would we need to do to do this, or?
So you're looking more at a proactive approach?
But-
Like, don't put, don't put X here because that's gonna create issues for the-
I mean, the least amount of enforcement work, the better. If you can handle it on the front end.
But if you draw a line, it's crouched. What's the concept?
The job description was, was approved.
Okay, but-
There you go. That's their job, right there.
But, see, here's my thing, Jordan, and I understand that. So, I think when you give a definition of a nuisance, and you list under the variables in there that we consider nuisances, and then I think you let, you put a limit in there and says, if it's noise, if it's dust, or whatever, as far as that goes, basi- based upon that, you tell people upfront. That way, when they get here, they know what's expected of them. I, it's just one thing, say, it's, it's one thing for us to come in here and say, well, noise is a nuisance. And, and, you know, all those, you know, traffic is a nuisance as far as that goes. But, there has to be some, some, to me, definitive number attached to it in zoning because it, it shouldn't be just subj-, uh, uh, it shouldn't be something, we come in here and, and, we say-
Same thing as somebody living beside it on open ground. If you've got cattle beside that, and they're, and things are blowing over, there's trash from construction, somebody cuts a fence, somebody, there's all kinds of that under nuisance. So is that subdivision, do you, can we shut it down for nuisance?
A little bit of falls under the building, Inspector, on that trash blowing off of the constru- construction side, but-
Some is, there's-
You don't have one of them too.
There's gotta be a balance
Right.
in the thing.
It's, it's front-end regulation, which is zoning, and back-end, which is code enforcement. That, I mean, you, you have to use, every community uses both to, to try to control a nuisance. And yes, you can define, distill nuisance when you talk about noise and when you talk about, um, intensity of land use, you know? You, you don't, you don't have to allow, this is why you restrict density and things like that. It, it is related. Um, so yeah, it's, it's gotta be a combination of both. A zoning text thing and, and trying to, trying to separate the most noxious uses from the rest of everybody else. That's, that's a big piece of the pie.
So do you put the noxious usage you're talking about, and I know I-two is, is a more restrictive thing, cause it's, it's, it's based on what stuff that would be, or what ends up in there ends up being something that's gonna be environmentally impacted.
Right.
Uh, chemical plants, uh,
Asphalt.
Asphalt plants, stuff like that, landfills, I think, or commercial landfills.
Yeah.
So do you end up grouping all of that together?
Yeah, pretty much. Um, but there's a whole range of, you know, different types of businesses, and, and that's, I mean, that's part of the planning process. What, what do we want? Where, you know, you can have a convenience store or a, or a restaurant conceivably, you know, close to a residential area, or even inside of one, and that's fine, you know, but you don't want to have a chemical plant inside of a neighborhood, right? So there's, uh, some of, some of the things are black and white and they're a little easier. Other things are a more gray area, and you got transition zones and things like that.
So if we're trying to push the, or suggest, or whatever you wanna say, we're not, there's, cause there's no way you can force it, but if we're trying to push these corridors, business and commercial corridors into that, I mean, we've got sixty-six up there, coming out, it's growing out from the exit. There's no doubt. It's already started that way. Uh, you've got four eleven, it's cut down through there. You've got eleven E. You've got, uh, ninety-two. And, and realistically, twenty-five seventy is a major thoroughfare. So you've really got five major corridors in our county.
Dumpin' Valley ain't far from being the sixth.
Well, I, yeah, I understand.
But it ain't, I think that, that is.
I think it is.
I think it is too.
It's probably, it's probably there, but it doesn't need to be, but I-
Doesn't need to be, but-
But it's the fact of it, that it's grown up. I mean, you've got four schools on that one road. Uh, so you've got a, an immense amount of traffic, but what I'm saying, we've got several corridors that we could, when we're looking at this, we could suggest that that's, that's where we want that type growth because we've already got the infrastructure. And as Mr. Tam and Terry, Mr. Terry said, that Dumpin' Valley is gonna be an iss- is an issue already. Uh, and it's one that's got probably already out of hand.
Do people that build a house, do they know what zone they're in and be built next to them?
And that's what I'm saying. That was one of the complaints, Chigger, is they said, oh, well, I didn't know this could be built here. So if we make those overlays, then everybody knows what the rules of the game are. If you wanna build a house on the four lane, have at it.
But there can be a hog farm, actually.
Well, not necessarily a hog farm, but there, there may already be a hog farmer, but, but there could be a, there could be a seven-eleven, or a Dollar General, or a whatever, a restaurant, or a, a warehouse, or-
Hog farm?
Hog farm. They're already allowed in A-one.
I know.
Well, what I'm saying is-
Do they know that a hog farm, they, you can put up a record fence on, between their property and your property? Do they know that you can turn five hundred dollars loose there?
Truth be known, most of them don't check.
They don't care? They don't care?
They don't care. They just-
To the, to the bill.
They don't think about checking, okay? So they, they, they don't. I mean, you can, you can talk to a lot of them, they, they just didn't think about checking.
It hunts beside me, Ms. Sue. I'm not worried about it till it gets there beside me.
You ever had farm-fresh sausage?
What about chicken house?
Have you ever had farm-fresh chicken?
Yes, no.
But I, but I think that's an important thing as we start down there, if we can, if we can accomplish and take away the issue of, hey, I didn't know that. If everybody knows where the fence is.
Right. You know, it's tricky because every, every, nobody wants, nobody wants you to tell, tell them what they can and can't do with their property, but they also don't wanna live next to a strip club, or a hog farm, or any number of other things. So, you, you can't please everybody all the time. We're not going to.
No.
Guarantee that. But we wanna put some real thought into, um, what we want the county to look like in twenty or thirty years. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the, the, that is the goal here for any long-range plan, is, is to put some thought into that, put heads together, get, get your, your architects, your engineers, your planners, whoever, you know, your citizens, people with various levels of expertise, experience, interests, um, range of interest together, and, and try to figure out where do we want, what kinda growth, and, and what kinda growth do we want? I just can't stress, there's, there's higher quality growth.
It started. There was some left out.
And so, yeah, that's, that's really their, their task, and I, I probably should go to those, I was with you, just as the county's planner, I should be going to those meetings. I, I, not that I would sign up to go to another meeting, but just saying, I probably should.
That sounds like a sign up thing.
I hate to sign up for more meetings.
I guess volunteer.
Yeah, I should, yeah.
Sorry.
See, what's junkyards, and Chigger wants to know?
Yeah, who wants to live next to a junkyard? Anybody?
It's probably what I, I-two, I-one, I-one.
We don't have any I-two.
Oh, that's right, we don't.
We have a zone for it.
Zoning doesn't apply to the county.
It does.
So we can have a county junkyard wherever we want it.
Yeah. But if you, uh, you're way too young to remember, so you'll have to read about it, but that was the offal's fight. I mean, it was like, it was like in Revelations. There was a lot of- I have no idea. So I could say you're way too young to remember, but when they moved the landfill, there was the offal's nation of teeth and slobber in every woods.
Oh, I've heard about it.
Let me ask the question. How, how much further can we or do we need to go tonight with this discussion? We've talked about a lot of things, uh,
Well-
are there any ideas that we wanna put out on the table now, and do we need to wait till we've got everything finalized from the committee and stuff, and have that back to us?
Well, I think that we ought, we ought to proceed. I mean, they're gonna make recommendations.
Right.
Uh, they're not, there's, there's not anything binding that we've gotta wait on, on their thing. So we need to be, we've waited long enough on maps and everything else. We need to, we need to keep working.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Terry, did you have something to say?
No, I'm just looking at something.
Oh, okay. Um, I think it would be good, uh, with questions about the long-range plan, to have the chair of the committee, Mr. Snodgrass, come and maybe address some of those questions.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think it would be an issue with-
This, this process we're going, this is not gonna be a quick process at all. I mean, it's a, it's gonna be a slow and arduous thing.
Yeah, let me work on it.
Why don't, why don't Chigger come back next month and have the plan laid out to fix everything?
So-
I second that question.
Okay.
So here's the question. If we're looking at all of this on these overlays, should those, should that ground be looked at as, and how far out do you go from those developments? To say, okay, if we're gonna have any more developments, we'd like them to go to these areas, next to these other developments, or how do we balance that, Jordan?
This is why I say, I'm not trying to get the county to spend money, okay, but when you have a whole planning, engineering, architecture firm working on it with a staff, they have all those needs.
You know that comes out of your salary, don't you? I'm just saying. We allocate so much for that.
We can't afford that. No, never mind. We'll do it. I'm just saying that, you know, for us, doing it here, laypeople, uh, sitting here, and, you know, we can go through, you know? I think the best thing, from a practical standpoint, I think the best thing we can come, that, that we can accomplish here is trying to see patterns, trying to- or what I would wanna get from you all is some marking these things up, marking up this is probably, probably more marking up the zoning map than the existing land use and saying, okay, here's, here is where we think is the most responsible for us to grow. And so, we want to, now, the future land use map is a whole different ballgame, though, but that, those would go towards a future land use map. And 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 the text to accompany it. So if we're not going to do that, who is? And that's why I say, I do think it would be, Jefferson County's growing fast, you know? It's it's gonna continue to grow, the the growth pressure's gonna be there, I don't, you know, what, how fast it grows, where it grows, whatever, I mean, I don't know. But I I I think it does make sense to do a comprehensive plan for Jefferson County. In my opinion, so, not against meeting as a planning commission and doing this, uh, but I do think because it it what, where's this gonna end up for us? What's our product here that we're gonna develop?
So, when you say Jefferson County's growing fast. No, 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 I'm just saying, when you say Jefferson County's growing fast, have you looked at the data to see if we are? Uh, that's my question.
All of these things seem to be growing fast. But almost all.
I know, I know that, but if you look, if you go back and you think about it, cause we go through spurts in this county, we have, we have development, we have growth, we hit, and then we, then we slack off and and as far as it goes, and we cycle through those things right there. And so, and I went back and looked at the other two, uh, plans that that we had before that and everything else, and what their projections were, and everybody said, man, Jefferson County, they're just gonna, boom, they're gonna go. And we never meet those goals. We we never meet, we never meet what people say we're gonna grow, how fast we're gonna grow. It it just takes one tick of the downturn of the economy and everything else, and people's, people, people stop, you know? And 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 here's what I say about this. When was the last time before us that we had a large residential development?
In the, in the unincorporated county?
Yeah, when?
Well, most of it's in the city, you're right.
Yeah, so in the county, when you sit back and you think about it, and you look at what's actually going on, as far as that goes, we, when I first came out here, we had, I mean, we had development after development, it'd be seventy-five lots here, a hundred lots there, whatever.
I guess Josh would be the last one, right?
Yeah, the one that was on the line, yeah.
And that's, that's short-term rentals.
Yeah, so that was my question, cause everybody says that we're growing. But when you, but when it was set down, done, and you and you look at it, he didn't subdivide it as much as he could have if he'd wanted to. He did, so I'm just saying, I I hear that all the time, but I look at the data all the time and I'm saying that is, what what you're finding is, is that you've had these developments that have been sitting out there for a long time, they have vacant lots and people are coming here and buying them up, and they're moving here, okay, and those, but once those are done, I I don't know what's next. I mean.
Another campground, bro. I'm not, I'm not assessing the census data in depth.
It's hard to get that, but.
I'll give you an example on the growth, in nineteen and ninety, if everybody in the county that lived here would have sold their ground for the tax appraisal, you could have bought the whole county for one billion dollars, nineteen ninety. In nineteen ninety-five, it was two billion. I think the last assessment, uh, four point seven, four point nine, do you know that, Steve? Is that about right? Last assessment here that we went through is, is, uh, so we're ninety, two thousand, we're thirty-four years. And it's four point seven or four point nine, somewhere in there.
Most of them go to somewhere else to shop and have a job. And work. Eleven E, you go up there at eleven E at five-thirty in the morning, six o'clock? Ninety-nine percent of the cars are going to Knoxville, and every now and then you'll see one or two coming back.
Our, our biggest sales tax has been, bump has been from the change in the law on the interweb. Where the county is now the largest sales tax collector rather than Jefferson City. Even with the retail stores in Jefferson City. Jefferson County now collects because it has to be remitted address specific.
So is that a good thing?
That is, that is a good thing.
Okay, so it's a good thing, but yet you're telling me that when we get residential, it's a losing proposition. Did that change the balance of that?
Not much, not much, because the problem, the it, the the numbers as far as raw numbers of dollars did not change significantly. It just changed a little bit where they're at, and and the sales tax is not, that's not where we collect the money. Property tax, but, uh, and it, you can't catch it in houses, Terry, there's no way. It just, there's too much cost in them for ambulance deputies, ambu- uh, roads, schools. I mean, and and that's the problem with the cities. The cities don't have anything that they are on the hook for, for schools. And so the three hundred and eighty houses or whatever it is up there at the county line that are not, that are, were annexed into Jefferson City, and they've got them stacked in there where they can just about reach out and shake hands from a kitchen. Uh, all of those kids are gonna be educated in schools by the county. If they're going to county, to a school in Jefferson County, unless they're going to a private or homeschool. And it's the county's responsibility, it's it's financial.
Talking about green medals.
So all of those kinda developments, the cities have no liability in what they're doing, so they don't worry about their growth as much as what the county's worried about the growth, because we're, we're, we're picking up the tab. Garbage goes to the county. Every bit of the that goes to convenience centers, every bit of the stuff.
That's true, but those individuals pay property taxes to the county just as well as the person that's outside.
I understand that, but the more people, the more garbage, the more we gotta do. Like I say, it's, it's just costs more services. We added, uh, two ambulances. Half million, half million dollars plus, nearly six hundred thousand, you gotta add eight people for the two ambulances for the crews. So I mean, it just, it's.
Got a zoning compliance officer we gotta pay for?
Guys, real quick, uh, I I know we're past public comment, I've had a young lady in the, in the, uh, in the citizens that's been raising her hand, I don't know if she has a question, I don't know if we wanna open it up to have any dialogue. But I believe it's the pleasure of board, I'm gonna give her a chance to ask the question, make a statement she wanna make, y'all want to do that, or you?
I think that's fine.
Okay, we're not gonna, not gonna open it up to to be going back and forth for a long time, you've got the phone, ma'am.
I just simply have a question, y'all are talking about transparency and us understanding what's going on, how things are, uh, zoned and that type of thing. Well, where, you know, I see you looking in your little book when you say, uh, you know, what is, how far away from the line do you need to be in this kind of zoning and that?
It's on line.
Well, I I looked and I I couldn't find it, so I must be.
Looked under Jefferson County and then looked under zoning.
That's what I looked under, maybe I can't find it on my phone, maybe I need to just see on my laptop, but I did look. And all I could see was the resolutions and all that stuff.
If you wanna call the office tomorrow with that and and talk with Miss Stephanie, she'll, she'll guide you to where you need to go get that. Yeah, if if you would. Thank you, ma'am, sorry for keeping you waiting so long.
That's all right.
Or you can come in, we'll give you a book. You come in, we'll give you a whole book.
We're trying to get a budget back.
Yeah, we're free.
Okay. Discussion.
Uh, I was gonna say, we're meeting with Tim Kuhn of the Tennessee State Data Center at UT. He's a, uh, demographic encyclopedia, this guy's brilliant. And he does population forecasts, uh, I believe he's done for all the sixteen counties in our region. I think it may be of use to either have him come or or he could give me the data he has for Jefferson County, and we could, we could, I could present it to you all, we could go through it. As, you probably should do that as part of this, I mean, cause you're saying, it goes through cycles and things like that, you know, he may have some, some useful data for us to look at.
So, can you take the data, Mr. Terry talked about those plans, and I've seen, I've read them, and I'm like him. They don't hit the, we don't, we don't hit the thing.
Yeah.
Can you take that?
Plan that was done, and, yeah.
Can we, can we extrapolate from that off of, since we've had two or three? How far off are we are on our projections and get something back to true data?
Well, you can retroactively, I mean, it's it's a forecast, so there's no guarantee, you can't control anything, God has control, so.
I I understand that, but I mean, how far are we missing them?
I'll, I'll take a look at the land use plan and, you know, which is. It'd be a, it'd be a starting place. I wanna see what Kuhn has, I think we're meeting with him actually tomorrow. If I remember correctly, his first, uh. I wanna see what data he has, because he has some very impressive data sets and there, there's nobody better in terms of demographic status than Kuhn, so. Let me see what he has, you know, maybe I'll, if I see something of value to you all, I'll share it with you. Any projection's just gonna be a guess, you try to use as much data sets as you can to produce that, but it's better to try to guess at it than just do nothing.
So he, in this, he's gonna forecast how many people he feels like is gonna move into Jefferson County? Okay, can, here's my next question then, is this, can he predict what age groups those will be?
He can probably, I mean, nobody can predict it, you know, with hundred percent accuracy, no. But the only way, I mean, can you?
They would give you.
I I look at the trend, I look at the trends on on some of the things that I see here now, and I mean, I understand where it's coming from. And and the reason I say that is, is that, is that when it goes back, and you were talking about how much value we have in this county? Well, the thing is, is that if you go back and it all drives back to the same thing here, every time we do a development, we make a change and everything else, we drive the cost up of housing, and so that's where it's at, so it's supply and demand right now, but the only people typically that can afford basically new houses, are people that move here, that have retired, that were affluent, or they have money, and they could so little ones, they can buy the homes, okay? But typically what you find is, that's just two people, uh, uh, for a family, that's, that's a two-family home that's there. And there's lots and lots of those, those people that are buying the housing that are coming here. So, that's why, uh, uh, cause I would be interested to see is, I know Talbot's ha- has gone through this growth spurt, but the question is, is that are we, are all our, based on the, the average of kids that are here, are we overcrowded?
Some places are.
Some places are full.
Absolutely.
You know, the type of housing that you're talking about, the ones on the lake, probably not, you're not producing a ton of kids out of the lake developments.
But you are the, the stuff we've seen. They're younger, more affordable.
They're gonna have.
I just, I I disagree with the ones in Dannery, cause I look at the buyers and the ones that come in Dannery, as far as that goes, and I will tell you that when I'm there, they're elderly, I mean, retired people, they're driving around looking to buy those homes. It's not for the fact that the, because the price is there, it's just the fact that there's nothing else, there's nothing there available for them to buy. So they're buying that, uh, just because that's there, and and of course, they're outbidding people that may have had kids. So I I'm just looking at it from a standpoint that it's not necessarily, that that's always the case. I I I, you, I think you, I think you said, when we're growing, I think you have to look at the age of the people who are coming here that's causing us to grow. I'm not sure, so sure it's, it's, it's kids, I'm not.
Well, you, you look at Jenkins Farm as an example, those are gonna be more retired folks, and it's the location of it. But again, like that stuff over next to the county line in Jefferson City, those are younger people.
They are.
Yeah, that's a younger group, and and that area is gonna be flooded in the school system.
Yeah, but it, but that younger group, that that group right there, and I see it every day, they're gonna be priced out.
Yeah, eventually.
Because Horton is not cheap anymore, it's not, I mean.
Well, they're still cheaply made.
No, they're not.
Oh, they're cheaply made, yes, sir, they're.
I I see them every day.
They're expensive, but.
I see them every day, they're not, not the ones I'm looking at, they're, they're very well-built.
Different levels of, yeah.
There's different levels, and and the ones I'm seeing is that, and so the people that are buying these, like I say, you can go out there, you can sit in their development, and you, and there'll be people driving around, and the, the people there, they're driving around, are retired people. Looking at those homes, I've seen them with maps and everything else sitting there, every day saying, this is one we're wanting to buy, and getting a bidding war for it.
Some of the trends are regional, you know, not just Jefferson County, but the birth rate is low, birth rate's the lowest it's been in, uh, you know, very, very long time, I don't, ever. So that's a factor for the whole country, the birth rate is low. So, yeah, even young people aren't having that many kids, one or two, maybe three. What was a big family when, when y'all were growing up, you know? Even when I was growing up, it was four, now it's two, three, you know, it it, the families are smaller, that's, that's a nationwide factor, so. And then there's regional trends, people moving here from other places, and I, I see that continuing, that's just my I I see people gonna continue to move here from Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Massachusetts, New York, California, Florida. I don't think that's gonna stop, the demand is gonna continue to flow. I mean, unless there's a major depression and people have to stay put, I just, I, I feel like that's gonna continue. Doesn't, doesn't mean they're gonna move to Jefferson County, I mean, it, you know, it depends on what's built where, uh, who's ready for them, that kinda thing, but.
So, question, how do we, if that is, if that is what happens, if your prediction comes true, how do we balance that with what we're doing right here on these maps? Because you can't build, uh, the county can't build, be solid houses. It can't survive that.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, I don't have a magic answer for that, you gotta have industry, you gotta have jobs, you, I mean.
So how do we make room for that, how do we, how, where do we want that, what do we wanna do? Cause we've got to have jobs, we've got to have industry, we gotta have commercial, that has to be in the mix. I was out in West Tennessee here recently in O'Byrne County, and you start driving down through there, and there's a lot of open spaces, there's, there's some population in places, but they've got a lot of industry, and their tax base is, is way more balanced than what ours is.
So you're saying we've had too much residential, not enough industrial, commercial?
We've, we've got, we've had more residential than we need. Uh, we've not brought enough businesses in this county to pay, to pay for the thing. Because that, you know, we've not supplied jobs, as, as Jigger said, they're they'll run over you going west of a morning on eleven E, cause they're going to Knoxville, they're going to Oak Ridge, they're going to wherever, they're going out of county.
Almost like a bedroom community type situation.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, how do you solve that easily, I don't know. That, I don't, you know.
Well, if we're, if we're embarking on this journey, we need to, we need to have some ideas, and we need to, we need to have some ways to balance that out, Jordan, that the businesses feel like they can locate here.
That's it.
And so you bring your economic development people in and get their ideas, get their recommendations, balance that with the interests of the community that's here already. Um, with some of your retired folks, you know, they've got their own interests too, so you gotta try to balance everybody's, and.
And then, then the other thing we're looking at here is, and it ain't gonna be long for me, it's closer for Tim, but, uh.
You talk about retirement.
If all these people are retired, they've got one thing in common, in the next forty years, more than likely, the same thing's gonna happen to them, they're gonna die in the next forty years. If you're, if you're sixty-five, in the next forty years, there's a good chance you're gonna be dead. So, when all that turns over, where does that put us?
Well, that means then we got a surplus of homes that there's not enough people to move to, and the property values in the county will plummet tremendously, which means then, that's less people paying taxes. The, the ones here will have to pay more.
That's what I'm saying, we've gotta come up, if we're making that twenty, thirty-year projection you're talking about, we've gotta come up with a balance. We, we've got to.
Terms of county, county budget and, yeah, sure.
Because the, the ones that, the ones that are here, you can't provide the services. You can't provide the services for them if you can't have enough in taxes, enough in revenue in the county. So we've got some, some duty of care to provide some vision on this thing as to how we get that balance.
It's kind of like, uh, again, the nationwide issue to some extent is, is aging population and most of our workforce growth is from migrants. We, when we looked at it, at, with Tim Coon at state level, we saw that the birth rate in Tennessee is low. Less than two, less than two kids per, per family or per woman. And most of the workforce growth in the last, was it the last ten years, has been from migration from other countries.
To make that kind of money and have those type of benefits. And you've got to bring, i- if you look at it, we're heavily residential compared to commercial and industrial. And the numbers are out there for that, lopsided numbers, even if you throw the industrial part of the mines in and stuff, it's still heavily residential throughout the county. And you, you're going to have to bring some, some more commercials, some more industry in, and I'm, I agree with Terry, we need to do something and, and with John too, to make it easier for those to come here. Have the area we want to steer them toward, but we've got to keep running them, we've got to quit running them off. When you've got somebody showing in.
When you say run them off, how, what do y'all?
Making it so hard for them to be able to get to do what they're wanting to do with the land that they want to do it on.
And i- if we build, if we build this program out and build the right kind of, and invite the right kind of commercial and industrial here. Then that's what we want. We're not, we're not out seeking environmentally hazard stuff and all this other, I mean, that's not your, that's not our goal with this plan. I mean, the goal is that we, we need economic development.
Need a crystal and straw plant.
What you open that? I bet, I bet you eat one of those shrimp sandwiches from Crystal.
You're going to have a new Dairy Queen, a new Harvish or something.
It goes after industry, I mean.
We've got the Jefferson County, Jefferson County Alliance, yeah.
There's, there's been some work done with them in the last little bit and land is just sitting vacant, that a lot of.
Well, you've got, you've got an industrial park right up in Jefferson City, sitting there that's already graded out and all that, and it, they're not.
And nobody's looking at it.
They're not even.
They've looked at it, but nobody's interested.
Nobody's building. I mean, the, the most economic development they've had is the Wives there.
Well, if you look, the last Jefferson Alliance thing was basically with this. I think they come to conclusions that I don't know if we're going to get industry, so their next big thing is, is just go get business. And that's prevalent in the fact that they came and said, you know, look at our, look at their exits. There, there, there's money to be made there, there's people that want to do that there because it's ready-made traffic, it's there and everything else. But what's it going to take to, to do that? So I think they've changed strings, they're saying, if we can't get industry, let's just get some other business, uh, as far as it goes. To help, to help from that standpoint, so they're looking at it from that standpoint that maybe that's how they need to go until, until the industry section comes up. I don't know, I'm just saying that that, that's one of the things that they're looking at is, is trying to, to do that. They've changed, uh, and, and my thing is, they're looking is, it says, okay, if we can't, if we can't get industry, what's the next best thing? And if it's business, whatever that consists of, then what, what is it going to do to have to take, to help them get, to get that, to promote that? And from when, from when it started, I can tell you that there's been, it's paid, it's picked the interest, uh, for business. Because people are thinking, you know, maybe, maybe it's going to be feasible for me to do this. Maybe this is going to be something that, that I can do, maybe I need to get in on the ground early on if all these come to fruition, so. But what it took was, it took that group of people of coming out and saying, you know what? Maybe this is the direction we need to go. And when people heard that then, they're saying, oh, if you go there, then I may be interested. I, I've seen it, I've seen it just in, you know, it's not been drastic, but it's, it's been a whole lot more than, than, than what we've had in the last two years. And so, uh, so I, I'm anxious to see how, I'm seeing how that plays out. It may fizzle, may die, but that's where they seem to think that, that they're, they're putting emphasis on is not necessarily for industry, but for commercial. I don't know.
Yeah, well, where, where are most of the goods that you find Walmart made? China, so there's your industry, I mean, I'm just saying that's a factory. Everybody wants industry. There, there is local industry too, I mean, but.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, and you know what, I, I brought up about one of the local industries and then I got, I got booed when I said this. But housing is an industry. And it would surprise me that if you go out and look at how many people are employed i- in, in that, in, I don't know. Schools, but schools may be the only thing that beats it. I mean, there's lots of people that have jobs here because of housing. That, that won't stay that way forever, and we've seen that as, as far as it goes, but I'm just saying that, to me, it's an industry.
A lot of those folks are traveling with it though.
Tourism is an industry.
They're, they're not residents, a lot of them are residents.
Okay, I, I agree with that, because this is why, and, and it's what I looked at it that way. I said, I said, okay, so Jefferson County here, the people that live here, we're bedroom communities, so they get in their car and they drive to Knoxville, they drive to Sevierville, they drive to Hamlin County, or whatever, get jobs. So some of these people that are building the houses, they live in Hamlin County and they're driving to Jefferson County, some of them live in Sevier County and they're driving here. So somewhere along the line, they're passing each other as far as it goes. Now, that being said, uh, you know, what do we, what, what's the best for us? I mean, I'm just saying that there are people that come into our county, uh, for industry, it's just not the type of industry that people, a lot of people think about. But it is, I, I, I mean, there are, I mean, I sat down and I just started talking to a few contractors about how many people that I think that they relate to and employ and give jobs in Jefferson County. It was unreal, more than I anticipated, everyone I ever thought of. And I just, it was just a tip in the bucket if it's what's there. What I've been saying is, is that we, we look at it as bedroom community, we are, because we, our people travel out to get jobs. But there are people who travel into Jefferson County to do work as well. And when they come here, they stop, they buy their groceries here, that, that's a plus for us. They buy, take your gas here, that's a plus for us, they go out and serve our restaurants, that's a plus for us while they're here. Because we know that our people, when they're going out, they're doing the same thing, so.
I think most of those workers are building houses.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But they still.
I'm just saying. The, you get, if you, I look at, at, as housing as an industry. I, I, I just see it that way and.
Construction industry.
It's a construction industry and there's, so there are a lot of people out of county that come to Jefferson County to work. It's just not, they don't go to a factory or they don't go to, but that's, they come here to work, so.
So how do we use these maps, Jordan, to develop this thing?
You got this figured out, yeah? Yeah, good question, I, I mean, I've, I've never really done it this way, you know, just to kind of look at maps and, um, you know, highlight some areas or something like that is, is my thoughts, highlight some areas where we think is ideal for industrial, ideal for, uh, higher intensity commercial, lower intensity commercial. Low density, what areas we want to preserve as low density houses.
Overlay, and I want to go down through there, I want to see what's already in there, okay? Because I'm going to say, because here's, here's what's going to come, to me, what's going to come back. Somebody's going to say, well darn, you're letting this guy do this right here, but, but now you're telling me, I, I can't do the same thing? Even though he's doing it across the street? Because what, we, we know that there'll be things that'll be grandfathered and it will be changing everything else. But all I'm saying is that we, you get that a lot, is that, well, I don't understand why my neighbor can do it, but I can't do it. So my thing was, is that's the reason I wanted it, because I wanted to see what was actually there. We have, we have zonings and we have zones there and we can see our zones. But there's other things there that we don't have zones, what's actually going on there? That's why I requested the, the maps, because I thought we would be, we would be surprised at things that are there that, this zoning before has never missed, it's still been there. But yet it's, it's a commercial business and the county's picked that up because they're, they're charging them as a commer, I mean, they're taxing them as a commercial business. There, if you look on that, there's going to be a lot that's going to show up that's not necessarily on our zoning maps.
Yeah, I think in a, in a public meeting format, it's kind of difficult to analyze them as a group. I can see if, if a, if a consultant or even myself sat down and looked at it and saw, okay, you know, I see this here, see some patterns and then point them out to the commission or something like that. I mean, but we can, you know, we, we can, we can do this every meeting and just kind of look at each map one by one and.
So let's say, for instance, we come in and we look at, start this map here and we said, okay, let's just say we started at four eleven over there. And we go, and we look at what's there now, what we know is there and everything else, and how the property's dispersed and what, and everything else. Well, somewhere along the line, we have to envision that's, that's going to change, okay? So why, we just need to be prepared for the change, that's why I'm saying there should be an overlay there. Yeah, we may have it zone day one right now as far as that goes, but the, the, somewhere along the line, some guy's going to say, you know what? I'd really like to have a business here. And instead of them having to come back and, and, and fight tooth and nail and everything else, it should be already set saying, hey, you can do that.
You say overlay, I say future land use map, it's the same exact thing, it's the same exact. You, you have your, your, your vision overlaid on top of your existing.
So to me, if you start that with, you're, you're.
It's not something we're going to produce here through this process, no. I don't, I don't think, we can influence that, you know, we can provide, I just think that's beyond the scope of, of what we're, what we can do here. With this commission and this format, that's all, not that we can't do it, it's just. Like I said, I, I think the county should hire a consultant to do a comprehensive plan, that, that is what that entails, that, that is what that produces right there.
Well, we started that with David. We'd started that with David and he.
You're talking about land use, the land use plan?
Yeah.
That is like a minor, and not, not to, you know, no disrespect towards Dave, of course, his passing and everything, but, um, what I'm talking about is a different animal than that. That, that is more of a, it's a word document, there's no maps in there, it's, it's just text. I've already looked at it, it's, that's not a comprehensive plan. It's a, comprehensive plan includes transportation, first of all, but it includes mapping, it includes renderings, it includes urban design, it includes, uh, a future land use map. To me, that's the most important piece of it.
Your office don't do that?
No, no, not for, you know, not, not for, I, I can do it, but it might take me five years. That's a, that's a big chunk of work. But that's a, that's a lot of work, so I'm not trying to, I'm not lazy, I'm willing to, but it, it's, you don't, you have a planning consulting firm with ten people working on that for six months. You know, I'm one person with nine other communities, no, I can't do that.
I know you can't.
Uh, that ain't happening.
But I don't know who, I don't know how we hire them.
So that was your job, I mean.
It happens.
I think Paul could handle it.
I might retire.
Actually, yeah, I think so, I think he could handle it.
I mean, if you think about it.
He's full-time with the county, so.
Turn me loose on him.
But, I mean, a lot, this is what happened, this is how you grow, this is when you start growing and, and I know you say, you know, the growth goes in spits and spurts and whatever, of course, but I mean, um, most communities over a certain threshold have some kind of a comprehensive plan. It's, it's just, it's, and it's not just a plan, but it's the process of doing the plan that you learn from. And you, you, you get some insights and maybe some epiphanies through that.
So you, so that you don't make the same mistakes over again?
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
Did you see what your mistakes were?
Not just the product, it's not just the document, the product, but the process is the product, is what I'm saying. Well, we're not trying to get out of anything, I just, I think that's the way we should go. It includes public meetings.
You know what that costs?
Um, I, I really don't, probably fifty to a hundred.
I see that in your future.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what it costs, so I'm just ballparking, it may be less. It may not be, I don't know, and, and we'll do the best we can then, and, you know, um, with, with the time that I have and, you know, if we can, if we can have some concrete areas that we circle, highlight and say, okay, we'd like to do this as a, as an industrial overlay corridor, we can do a map like that.
And we're going to put what's allowed in that industrial overlay corridor.
And then change the zoning text.
And the zoning text will change based upon that, and there will be things in there sometimes that says in this industrial overlay, uh, overlay that it could be, uh, used under review. As far as that goes, okay, because not every piece of property is exactly the same, we know that in Jefferson County. So those, that's the type of language that would be in there, okay? And then basically when it says in there, then we're going to put guidelines as far as how that's going to be developed, okay? What's, what's going to be required, because we've had some people who would say, hey, we want some architectural control on there, I don't know if we want that or not, uh, I'm.
We don't have that authority, because like John Neal said, unless you own the property.
Yes, you do have that authority.
For site plans, you do.
But I'm, but I'm timed up for the overlay, you can't just say this is all going to be this.
You can have a designer review commission, although I think that's just a municipal. I think you have one in the county, actually, a designer review commission.
I, I, I don't know. That was, it was requested.
Was, I favor it, I mean, but I know the state law, I believe it's a municipal thing, I don't know that a county can do a designer. There's, there's probably something a county can do, let me check into that, but.
A county can do performance standards, can't it?
Performance standards for inside development, but architectural for building design.
I don't think they can.
Cities can, for sure, Los Angeles does, Jefferson City does, um, Vanderbilt just adopted one, Plaine U does, most of mine have, have architectural standards. They require a pitched roof or something like that, you can't have a all metal building, um, things like that.
Landscaping?
Landscaping, Vanderbilt just adopted a designer view commission, yeah, uh, Louisville's got one.
Tasman?
Tasman, I don't know, I don't, I don't serve them, but, uh, it's, it's just a way to try to give you some leverage in negotiating with developers to get higher quality of building design. They're going to do the lowest quality possible for most of them. And you want, you know, do you want to look at ugly buildings or, I mean, it just depends on what they're using it for, you know, so, I mean, you're not going to make everybody build a Taj Mahal, but, you can have standards that they, you know, but again, if you want to do whatever you want to attract business, well, that, that's not, I mean, that, that's going to be.
That would be almost like subdivision regulations, wouldn't it? And the paper, you know, once half of it has to be stung and.
Oh, come on, uh, homeowners or de restrictions. Uh, yeah, in a sense, it'd be, it'd be, but not nearly as restricted as most de restrictions.
So you're saying even if we have these corridors, we can't put that in the, in the corridors?
Can't put what?
Have a design review.
I'm going to check into that, I'm, you know, I, I want to have Campbell County go to county, I have, so the language I remember is chapter six of T C A and it, I believe it refers to municipal. But, I'm, so I'm not aware, but I'm pretty sure Knox County, maybe not, I'm going to have to look into that one, I'm not sure if the county can.
And Knox County and Davidson, Hamilton and Shelby operate under home rule, they're under a different, or charter or whatever you want to call it.
They operate more like a city than, under that.
It, it, there's a whole lot of variation in it, but it's, they get to make up different rules.
Well, I make the motion, we, uh, table this discussion in the next meeting?
Yes.
Good.
I'll say it with that.
We have a proper motion in the second, any discussion?
Needs to be postponed, table.
Postpone, pardon me, need to postpone this to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Would you like to go back and make your initial motion?
Yes.
Okay, to postpone this to the next meeting?
I'll agree with that.
Postpone.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, any more discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank, uh, Jordan and Mr. Bolton for all the work they did on maps.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's good to have you here. We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? All those in favor, let me know what you're saying, uh, all those both, okay, we.
All those both, okay, we have, uh, other business. I hear you, it's.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I do have something for other business.
Okay.
Uh, Lee Ann Sutton with the mayor's office was kind enough to print off a copy of the survey results, or whatever we're calling it.
Survey, hold on, I was, man.
And, uh, we had a question, and I wanna address it as far as I know from, uh, the citizens who are here tonight, and the citizens input about the Grisilli property. Uh, we've heard, speaking from the ones I spoke with, we've heard rumors.
We lost that lawsuit in two thousand twelve, Supreme Court, Tennessee overturned us.
Okay.
So we lost it, um, but Doug is checking in, I think, and I'm not ready, Doug's got it. But if they not, if they didn't do anything after thirty months, I think it's thirty, then they lose their grandfather in the lawsuit. Right now, their grandfather's in, but we're checking into that.
Okay.
Went down there last week, there's been no activity at all. There is a sign, that, that's it, and I don't know how long. Mark Faro, I'm asking if there was any, and he's not seen any years.
Okay.
The Blue Water sign?
The Blue Water, how long's it been up?
It's been there for a few years.
Probably three years.
Okay.
The, uh, Blue Water, uh,
They own it.
They own it, and they put that sign up after they bought that from, uh, I think it come out of the Nearstar deal. They had to disperse so much stuff that that was tied in with the Sarko and Nearstar and all of that, but they put a sign up. They actually, they actually own out where the convenience center is too. That's Blue Water, that whole hill out there.
But we did lose that lawsuit, and, uh, but Doug checking in that thirty months.
That satisfy you?
Yes, sir, thank you for addressing it, remember, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, sir. Okay, and these for us to take home and look at?
Yeah, and if it's open, I guess it's a pleasure of the board, but, uh, would you be open to having somebody from the long range plan come and and maybe answer some of the questions? Younger Jordan had some questions.
I would very much like that.
Just to kinda see what, what they're, what they're going towards and.
We don't wanna be redundant, or, you know, uh, duplicate efforts and things, so.
Absolutely. Does anybody have any objections to that? Tim brings up the.
So we anybody motion?
Uh, I don't think we have to make that in form of motion. I think we'll just be under agreement on that. Is there any other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And then we adjourn this meeting.
Have a proper motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Got a second, a third, all those in favor, please stand.